Okay, good evening and welcome to the September 6th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's 7:03. Call the meeting to order. First agenda item is to review and approve approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from August 28th, 2017, as written.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number three. ... of a public meeting on the East Milton Deck project, which is scheduled for September 13th. And that will be the council's... ... of that project. We might be in attending the Master Plan Implementation Committee on October 17th, I'm sorry, October 16th, to discuss the Milton Landing and Wharf area. So I know that we have another date that we'll probably try to fit in after the 25th and in between 16th. So why don't we finalize that before the end of this week, Emily? Okay, item four?
Are we gonna post for Monday night at the Warren Committee? Are we all gonna go to that?
We already are. Yep, we are posting.
Oh, you are?
Yep, for the Warren Committee.
Good.
To have a discussion with the Warren Committee and the Town Government Study Committee and the Personnel Board to talk about an article for town meeting. Number four on our agenda is citizen speak. Do we have anybody here tonight for citizen speak? Okay, seeing that there is no one at this time, we'll move on to a quarterly report with Jack Grant, our fire chief of the Milton Fire Department. Evening, Jack.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming in.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
Chief, welcome.
The, if you look at the report, nothing really stood out from you, as it generally doesn't when I tell you. Just over 1,000 runs, so we're right on the average. The only thing, you know, I took a little look in overtime. It would, preceding your time even, Dave, on the board, you know, there'd be times I'd say, you know, looking forward to having a structure fire that, you know, didn't go to multiple alarms and wasn't on, you know, two floors even. The shift in the last couple of years, the first line says that we've responded during that quarter to five structure fires. And in fact, the funny thing is, you guys have become a little black cloud because I came directly from a fire here last meeting, and they had a small one tonight as I was on the way in. So there's been a little bit of a shift, and I don't know why, in the last, say, year or so, where, you know, rather than the second, third alarm fires, we're getting, you know, smaller, you know, quick knockdown fires. So I just thought that was worth mentioning. Beyond that, why should I say, does anybody have a question on this report? Beyond that, I'd throw out there that we actually had the Norfolk County Tech Rescue Team in today. They did a drill over on the side yard.
Watched it.
Did you watch it?
Yeah, I was in the park office.
It's, it's an interesting group. They do a tremendous amount of training, and they're a great resource for the area because it's all, it's all evolutions that are too equipment-intensive and too manpower-intensive to do locally. You know, they do confined space, they do high angle, swift water and collapse. Actually, in fact, Mike was on the way out of town, and I was grabbing him in his final few hours of being here and putting together the okay to release a couple of our members to head down to Houston. They had stood up a four-member group with swift water capabilities, and, you know, at the end, they stood them down. They did not go, but they were, they were in line. So it's, it's a valuable group to have locally. We also are awaiting the new engine, which is due in mid-month here. I suspect it'll probably be closer to October 1st by the time we have it in town, and it should be, you know, in town and on the road as soon as it gets here. But it's due up in DeHaleboro in the next couple of weeks.
Are any differences with the new engine and any of the equipment on it that they have, that your staff have to get trained on?
You know, what's interesting is, one of the switches we did make this time around, and I probably could have done it with the last engine as well, other than that I wasn't a big proponent of this stuff. I didn't, I didn't trust it early on. And, and we work with a bunch of good vendors and, you know, I do trust them, but they're salesmen, and I don't trust them. It's, it, the, we're going to battery-powered hydraulics, the jaws, and we already have them in quarters, so they're waiting to go on the piece. The great units, you know, it gives you that ability to, you know, if you have somebody that's 200 yards off into the woods, that you're not sneaking all kinds of hydraulic line, and really, really turning out to be a great tool. It's funny, it came, it came to be the vendor that, for the engine itself, that put me onto him. He mentioned him and, you know, the storage and space savings that you have, and knowing that he's dealing, you know, every, all over the northeast here. You know, I asked him what different departments' opinions were, and he said everybody was raving about them. So then I did my own little research, and sure enough, they are. So we've got one set going on, that engine, and I'll work to... We're kinda contemplating at this point that we'll put one of, one of those on each of the two outside engines, engines two and four, and probably keep the engine here set up with the gas-powered hydraulic lines at least... And then, where we are. But that's probably the biggest change in equipment that we've seen.
Still made by Hurst? Is it a Hurst?
Yeah, there's a number of vendors out there. We have always stuck with the Hurst, and we've had good luck with them.
E1 on the truck? Again, E1, yeah?
E1 with the truck, yeah, yeah. It's funny, back when we first put it to service, that rotation of buying an engine every five years, the Capitol Committee at the time asked me, you know, are we buying the right stuff? Are we, you know, and there's apparatus that's a good bit more expensive. So I did some asking around, and really, the life expectancy is the same, and the issues are the same. So E1's been a, it's been a solid...
A workhorse of the...
It really has. It's served us well over the years.
Yeah, nothing glaring in the report. It's pretty, pretty much the same, though. I know, I noticed you guys have been awfully busy on, on a lot of runs, you know, in and out, you know, whether it be on car accidents and things. It's been awfully busy.
It's funny that you mention that. The car accidents this year, for whatever reason, seem to be up, and the seriousness of the accidents seems to be higher at this point in time, and, you know, probably just a cycle that you're going through.
Right.
But I've noticed that myself, even to the point in the last several weeks, we've been up at Randolph Ave very frequently.
Right.
So I actually pulled those numbers this afternoon, just to take a look at it. We've been up there since July 1st 10 times.
And that's, a lot of that's been speed, and, you know, and the police have done a great job. I know that they were doing some targeted speed, you know, calming measures, and, but the thing is, is that it's a state road, too, you know?
Yeah.
You know, we're supplementing, and, you know, obviously, the state police do a fine job, as they always have, but it's, but we're being, you know, taxed a little bit on having to help out.
It's, yeah.
As you are.
Dick Dick will tell you that habitually, just, you know, our entire careers, that's, that's probably the worst road.
Yeah, no question.
And, you know, you, you're gonna contain it to a certain extent, but it is what it is, like you say.
Long track, four lanes, deep, yeah.
Yeah.
Deep, steep incline on that hill coming down from...
It's one of those roads where, you know, personally, especially when I lived over on Thatcher Street, that I'm not taking a left coming down there, I'm going to the lights.
Yeah, no, I agree. Hopefully, MassDOT can help us out in trying to find some solutions.
Yeah, it's one of those, and they've been up there a number of times over the years. It's one of those, always a work in progress.
Right.
And it's, but that's not the only site. We have been, you know, we have been running around to a lot of relatively serious car accidents this year.
Any questions for the chief?
Just one. It's probably too early to tell, chief, because it's only, we're just counting up on the end of the first quarter, but staffing and overtime, is that all tracking where it should be for first quarter of the year?
No, you're right. It's too early. I generally don't even look at it this early. I haven't seen anything that stood out that would tell me that we're...
Okay.
... gonna be higher than normal. I'm glad you mentioned it. That was one of the things I would have had slide off my plate. We do have two recruits that are probably a little better than the halfway point in the training academy right now. Their graduation date is set for September 29th, and then we're actually working on getting two more in, hopefully into a January, you know, maybe it slips back a little bit later, but into a class around January.
Great.
In Stowe? Stowe, yeah?
Stowe, yeah.
Good facility.
It is, you know, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, sometimes you have to wait to get in there. In this instance, we had, Brian Doherty had retired, and we've got Kevin Mahoney that will turn 65, so will be a mandatory retirement, so you can plan ahead a little bit. But it's one of those things where, even if you do have to wait, you know, it's consistency of the product, it's worth the wait.
I know what you mean. I know what you mean.
Yeah, Malcolm had used, you know, them and then, you know, shopped around a bit, but it's, there's some benefits. The benefits outweigh the cons, put it that way.
It's an unbelievable facility when you go there. It's like state-of-the-art. Actually, there's two now. There's one in Springfield now, right? Is it west of Mass?
They're just, yeah, about, about a year into the one in Springfield, yeah. And did lighten the load somewhat, which, that was kind of the main impetus of it.
I just wanna go back to the tech rescue thing. I was, as you know, I was involved in funny, there's one in every county now. If you see the news tonight, you'll see the Essex County, Essex River Lynn, whatever county one it is, you'll see a rescue that was done today.
That would be Essex.
The woman, yeah, the woman, you see that on the...
Yes, just before I came over.
Was running and fell off a cliff. She was laying in this steep incline in the woods near a pond all night long, and she was seriously, she's gonna survive, but it was a tech rescue to get her out. It's, 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 you know, I'm a big champion of regionalization. It's one of the big things in our region here, that a lot of money went to funding tech rescues for each county. And if you saw them, they're two big trucks, and they carry a lot of stuff that any operation, any incident commander could need. It doesn't cost them any money, other than the people he puts towards it.
Right. It's, and it's been, you know, it's one of those particular teams where it's, you know, low repeat, but high, you know, high training involved, so you really couldn't do it. And it's, I think it's one of the big success stories around the state, in that the hazmat on the fire side is one of them as well, but they, they have each and every team training to the exact same standard, so they're...
Same equipment, same trelleys, same everything?
So they're highly, highly interchangeable. In fact, the Norfolk team really has now evolved as a Norfolk, Bristol, Plymouth, I'm missing somebody, the Cape. So there's four teams in the area, and really, they've involved, they still maintain their own operability, but they're actually the southeast team as well. And that's what that was heading to Texas was, you know...
Southeast region?
Southeast team with one crew from each of those four teams, making up the whole crew. So it really has been a huge success story, and now it's, you know, it's a matter of just maintaining it, because there is a big cost to, you know, all the equipment and the training.
Well, we wanna thank you for coming in tonight, chief. Please thank the men and women that helped serve our town.
Certainly will.
Yeah, we appreciate their service.
Thanks for having me. Have a good night.
Thank you, chief.
Take care. Okay, next on our agenda, we have Matt Sullivan from the Wharf Street Restaurant Group to come in, related to an application to amend the common vicular license to do business as Azul. How are you, Matt?
Great, how are you?
Good, thank you for coming in tonight.
Not a problem. Thanks for having me.
So I got an opportunity to sit down with Matt, the town administrator, and Barbara Martin from Selectmen's Office a couple of weeks ago, and we got to know Matt a little bit, and, you know, running a good operation down at Azul, and so we have you in here tonight. If you want to just go over a little bit about the amendments.
Yeah, nothing, I mean, the hours and everything would stay the same. Be more of a focus to a modern Mexican menu with some American elements. Besides that, there's really not much else. I think it would probably just generate a little more revenue. That's kind of the plan. And I think a little time should be a good fall and winter, and go from there.
One of the things that we had discussed was ensuring that you had the certificate of insurance. Is that up to date now?
Oh, yeah. No, I emailed it, it was, it was, the one that I handed in my liquor license was the current one at the time. The insurance was always active.
Okay.
It just, but, yeah, no, I emailed her, and I followed up this morning with an email to make sure, but she didn't get back. But it's all set.
Great.
Yeah.
Great.
Lunch, no? Lunch or still just dinner?
Uh, yeah.
Dinner only.
Dinner only, yeah, yeah.
I think in our licensing, we have ability for weekend lunch. The parking in the middle of Monday through Fridays, I don't think, really accessible. But at some point, maybe, but right now, I think it'd just be seven nights.
Great. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. So I'll move that we approve the amendment to the common vic license for the Wharf Street Restaurant Group to do business as Azul.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have you for one more item, and this is approval of a liquor license amendment. You know, as the licensed authority, the board, we have to approve there any amendments that come before us relating to the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission. So basically, you haven't changed any hours?
No.
It's 5 to 11, I believe.
Correct.
Yep. And I think everything else is in order.
Yeah, paperwork looks good.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to approve the amendment on the liquor license for the Wharf Street Restaurant Group to do business as Azul. So the amendment request may be forwarded to the A, B, C, C.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matt, thanks for coming in tonight.
All right.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, man.
Best of luck, and...
All right, good luck. Have a good fall.
See you soon, thanks.
Good for Andy.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have a conference with our airplane noise chair, Andy Schmidt, and Sebastian's also gonna come up and join as well. Welcome, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
So we've got, got a few things to talk about. Some are simply updates, and then, and some are some recommendations. The first thing that I wanna talk to you about is just the, where we are in terms of noise complaints for the year. So through, through July 31st, we've filed 15,552 noise complaints. Percentage-wise, we're actually down, so that's part of the good news. We're down to 44% of total noise complaints, as opposed to 50s, 50s and higher earlier in the year and prior years. The change is directly attributable to the short-term closure of 4R earlier in the year, and, and we've seen in the noise complaint, in the noise complaint figures, where those planes have gone. They've actually gone to Medford, and so, so Medford has seen a dramatic increase in the number of noise complaints they've filed. So now Milton and Medford are now one and two, in terms of the highest number of complaints for the year, and the most callers for the year. So it is interesting to show that it is, what a, what a huge problem it is, and to see what a, even a minor shift in operations can mean for a community. When going, going to the next slide, you can see that there were some other changes as well. Although we, you know, we still have the most noise complaints filed, there, I wanna draw your attention to where Medford has, is now. Medford, again, number two, 700, sorry, 7,629 noise complaints between January 1st, 2012 to July 31st, 2017. And the, what's, what's important to note is that more than half of that, more than half of those noise complaints in that 70... The first, first six, seven months of this year. So, so there are some dramatic shifts going on. In fact, Medford has now knocked Winthrop off of the, Medford and Roselandale have, have knocked Winthrop out of the top 10 rankings for, for the most noise complaints that have been filed for over the last five years. And Roselandale, also relatively new phenomenon. They're affected by 27, which obviously affects us as well, and, and they've been very active in terms of trying to get the word out to, to file noise complaints, and to be very vocal about the, the length of time that they've been seeing those planes, and also the hours that they've been seeing those planes, often as early as 5 o'clock in the morning, despite the fact that Massport continues to say that, that they don't fly over land for departures until after 7:00.
Yeah, I've been aware of that. I've spoken many times to the city council, Tim McCarthy, related to that and to those increases, and it's alarming to them, and, you know, it's alarming to Medford as well. And it just shows us that it is a greater problem for a lot of people, and that, you know, we're not in this alone. And I think that, you know, first, wanna thank Senator Timblety for creating the quiet skies caucus within the State House, you know, with, between the Senate and the House Representatives. And, you know, we've done some outreach throughout the Boston City Council, so all of us coming together, I think, are gonna be able to prove to be a stronger, more unified voice to help support each other, 'cause it's, you know, we're not looking to just take them off of our skies. We're looking all for, you know, inequitable support.
It's interesting to see with the Medford example, the Roselandale example, that, that people are starting to realize that, no, it's not just us. It's not just Milton filing, filing too many noise complaints. It's actually Next Gen and these concentrated flight paths are a problem, and they have a negative impact on, on people's lives. Moving to the next slide, the, so we still continue to dwarf the, the number of noise complaints that our, that our immediate neighbors have filed. And so it's, yes, we've filed 17 times as many since, since 2012, and, you know, until we see a change in terms of the flight paths, specifically the fours, I don't see that changing anytime soon. But what's interesting is the, is this next slide. Medford continues to have the most callers of any community. They're twice our size, so 56,000 people versus our 27,000. So they have about, you know, roughly about 50% more, 50% more, 40% more people calling than we do. But, and again, it's, it's consistent with the, with the suffering that they've been going through, with some of the flight, flight path changes. But what's also, what's also interesting, again, towns being knocked out of, of top 10 status in terms of number of complaints and number of, number of callers. Everett has seen a dramatic spike in their, in their number of callers, and so they've recently pushed Belmont out of the top 10. So it's interesting to see the towns that have been traditionally very active and very affected by airplane noise, air traffic, falling out of the top 10 in terms of complaints and callers, something that I think we should follow and keep track of over time. The recommendations and action items, actually, if we can go to the last page, we have two, two new recommendations from some of our more recent meetings. The, or, sorry, to increase awareness about the impact of airplane noise and, and air pollution, and that would be such things as writing to the Mass Medical Society to, to raise the issue, make them more aware of it. There's a status paper or a point of view on leaf blower noise. I'd like to think that, that we'd be able to take a stronger stance on something like airplane noise, which is certainly much more endemic. But also to raise awareness at the, with the various schools and other, and other groups within town, just to say, this is what the issue is, this is what we need to be doing, and this is how you can take care of yourself. These are some ways to at least try and manage the noise. Permanent solution. And then the number 15 is to acquire noise monitors, portable noise monitors that can be deployed around town to independently measure noise levels and durations. There've been, especially recently, some extraordinarily long periods of time where, where we've had 17-plus hours of, of air traffic over the same homes as frequently as, you know, 1.2, 1.3 minutes apart. And to be able to measure that frequency with some, with some additional accuracy, and also measure the noise levels that go along with it, I think will be vitally important as we continue to raise awareness, both here and beyond. And Sebastian Barbogallo has put together some, some notes on, on a proposed path forward. For those of you who don't know him, he's, he's one of the, he's an additional ANAC member. You've been on for years at this point.
What years?
And so I'd like to hand it over to him to, to walk through what he's found, and, and also to hand order any questions you may have.
Thank you, Andy. Were you guys able to...
Yes.
So at the request of the board, we started investigating different types of noise monitors that the town can purchase to independently collect data. And to that end, I met with a gentleman named Kent Johnson of Cambridge last month, or actually in July, to review some of the monitors that he's been using for the past few years. So Kent is a sort of an independent activist working with the Belmont, Cambridge, in Boston West Fair, Boston Fair Skies Committee, doing, doing his own data collection. He's sort of very interested in that. So he's gone through, for the past four or five years, two to three different monitors that he's used to collect the data. He walked me through the pros and cons of each one, and he was very firm on a recommendation of this particular model that I've outlined below from Convergence Instruments called the Noise Sentry MK2. So this particular model comes in two different formats, which we are recommending purchasing one of each. So the first format, both of these models are about the size of a digital camera, and they can be mounted on a tripod and deployed almost anywhere. We can put a tripod, you can mount it on a roof for long-term usage. The, it has a one-to-two-week battery life, and you can collect data that entire time, retrieve it, plug it into your computer, get the noise data, the peaks and valleys of that time period. And the second model, which we recommend purchasing, would be for long-term usage, which would come with a solar panel and Wi-Fi capability, so you can kind of get a live stream of the data dial-in to...
You don't have to go and retrieve it.
The idea being, and we're still ironing out the finer details of where to put it and how long to, to collect the data, will be to find one or two areas underneath a four or 27 area...
Approaching.
... for long-term data, sort of to validate the noise contours that we're seeing, that we're getting from Massport, and have another one, which we can deploy anywhere, anytime, without interrupting that specific...
So if something were to change, like quickly, you could just quickly...
That the runway use patterns can change frequently, or sometimes they stay on one section for a very long time, so if we notice a trend, someone can very easily go put the monitor in someone's yard and say, okay, 500 to 27 is for that particular time, and collect the data for a week or a day, or even, just to sort of capture the data in decibel levels that were, that are coming overhead. Because at this point, all we really have is for data collection to report our annoyances, number of calls, and...
You don't have scientific data, you just have...
Which can be kind of written off as almost anecdotal, because one person can file X...
100, right, oh, right. Same call, I can call 100.
Aside from that, we have the flight paths from the Logan site that shows... How loud each of those events is on the ground. So I think it's imperative for the town to be able to have that data as we continue this, this battle.
And one of the other things that, that this would be really helpful for is the, is the FAA's search for a, an alternative noise measure. So they recognize that DNL is flawed, and one of the reasons DNL is flawed is that because of the way the logarithm works, you can cram more and more planes into, into a tighter and tighter space and not have an appreciable increase in your DNL level. So other jurisdictions, other markets, like Australia, have looked at N65 and N70, so the number of events that are over 65 decibels, number of events that are over 70 decibels, because those are, that is a level that's accepted as being disruptive. And so if we're able to show that, look, you know, we have X number of N65, X number of N70 versus the DNL that you're saying is, is, you know, whatever it happens to be, I think we'll better be able to demonstrate the impact that it's having, especially on the, some of the neighborhoods that either see a lot of use, or on the neighborhoods that are, that are sandwiched between the fours right now.
I agree. I think that if we have the ability to place them in locations that, that we know are trouble spots, and that they're approved by Massport, that could be good data that we can collect.
Does Massport know that you're thinking of doing this?
Well, they will.
The gentleman from Cambridge, what is he doing with his data?
So he presented it to, I forget the actual...
Independently? He's just a, just a citizen?
He's a citizen.
Not on a CAC, not on an ANAC, he's just doing this as a citizen who has an interest in this.
And, and, and one thing I think's also important to note is, is he is one of the best people... And one thing I think is also important to note is he is one of the best people at data visualization that I've ever seen. So he's put together some just absolutely amazing charts in terms of how noise has changed over time and what that impact might be.
How much? That's the big question, Dave.
Yeah, to purchase one of each, as well as all the accessories you would need, which is basically a tripod, two tripods. The one that would want extended use for, would want to get a solar panel for just $50. So all in, we're looking at just shy of $1,200. And that includes a sound calibrator, so which before you deploy it, you plug it on top. And just a way to validate the actual readers, would be one of the first questions that someone from Massport would try to use to debunk your data to calibrate your machine.
Name of the radar gun.
Say yes.
The radar gun allows us calibrating.
Exactly.
And the calibrator is a one-time cost.
A one-time cost. You only buy one for, if you buy 50 of them, you just buy one, you can calibrate.
Well, I don't think that that's a very big cost, especially with what we're faced with, you know, in terms of being impacted. You know, I think that if we can find ways to build our case, and I think that that's short money in the grand scheme of things, yeah.
How many billion dollars is that council?
Not very many.
Not very many. So it's like compared to what? You definitely bring a good point is that in the complaints, if I already, the FAA or Massport, you can always say it's subjective because it's huge, you know, versus you're talking raw data that you can't dispute.
Right.
It's like, you know, why they want cops to wear video cameras today, so that you can show.
Yeah, I think we need to continue to build our case, and this is another asset for us to use in doing so.
I think this is a smart investment. We should note, we sent this over to Nancy Timmerman today. She's our noise expert. She's going to retain by town council, so it went to town council, and town council asked, can we have Nancy take a look at this, just to be sure that she's comfortable with it? But I agree with you, David, I think it's, and you, Richard, I think it's a good investment for short dollars.
I'm going to make a motion now. I thought you were going to say to do.
Well.
I can wait on that, that's fine.
We can take it up at the next meeting, it would at least give Nancy an opportunity to weigh in on it. If she has any questions, she could speak with Sebastian.
This model we've looked at is probably the, at the best point of commercially available, budget-friendly, but still would be taken seriously by an authority like the FAA or Massport. But if she has any more recommendations of other models, or if she can validate this one, definitely open up here in her opinion.
Sebastian's done a lot of work on this over a period of time, which has been very helpful.
Anybody else looking to do this, that you know of, any other community?
Well, Belmont has acquired a number of devices that they've been using around town to measure noise levels there. And Kent Johnson's been working with the Belmont group and the Cambridge and Somerville groups to get a better understanding of what the noise levels are and what the, how frequent the planes are there.
Right, so this model that Kent has, the one that we're recommending, was purchased by one of the groups, I think Boston West Fair does. His older model was purchased by the Town of Belmont.
So I want to bring up a point. Compared to Milton, 50,000 compared to 30, we're a bigger community geographically. So we're almost 15 square miles. Cambridge's only 4.5, Medford can't be much more. They may even be small. Cambridge, Medford's smaller than, so my point is that we're getting it over a longer distance because we're bigger, we're just figuring size. And so if you're just watching, you get Randolph, you're getting it from High Park, you're getting it from Dorchester, it's just coming, there's a bigger footprint we make. Even though we have fewer people, more people are impacted because we're getting it across the town. A lot of people don't realize that. They think size and population, not size and geography. We're twice the size of the city of Cambridge, just about in geography compared to what they, even though they're very dense and Medford's a similar, as is Somerville, they're similar, you know, many multiple family halls, many high-rises, school, you know, they're just, they don't have 50. If the Blue Hills were populated in Milton, where we would be. Because look at how many planes come every, just across, you know, the 28 Chikatawakaw. It's hundreds? I don't.
It's over 50,000 a year on the fours, so.
Well, Medford did, certainly did a great job over grassroots of rallying people very quickly. I think the change with the runway shutdown was almost an overnight spike for them, and they were able to really mobilize the town and get a call campaign going. I think that's really showing their case.
Since your last time here, I've started, I found a good spot on the east side. So I go over to the point, I don't even know, it's part of that old area, strip across Mulcahy, yuck up at the point there and squirm them. You sit right there and just look at Milton, and on the days, you just, it's like I've learned more in the past six months about, it's almost like watching the Southeast Expressway. Really, there's a high-speed lane, there's an inside lane.
There's two highways in the sky.
Yeah, it is, it's like, it's a great viewing point where you can actually, you know, look right up at Milton and see them just.
And even from this window, when at nighttime, you can see the landing lights all stacked up three, four deep. And it's, you know, it's, what was gratifying was the, and I'm sure you've all seen it, the recent Phoenix decision that is going to make, in theory at least, the FAA take another look at what they did. But a lot of communities around the country are very happy about that decision because it does go a long way towards saying, look, you need to take people into account when you're making these changes. You need to have the proper outreach, you need to do the proper monitoring, you need to take the proper environmental impacts into account. So, you know, for example, the Blue Hills, there's definitely an environmental impact out there. And it's, you know, an open question, it's whether or not that was fully considered.
No question. And getting back to one of your earlier bullets, we intend to work with the Board of Health jointly, you know, our board and their board, to help enhance the great work that's being done. So, you know, I think that they bring a lot of experience.
Absolutely.
On the health side.
And we're happy to help collect the data.
You know, by you collecting the data and us allowing them to review some of the information that we're going to send out and have their input, I think is going to make us stronger in the end.
Did you want to mention the JetBlue letter while you're here?
Sure. So, the, and I did take a look through Keris' comments, and those should be pretty easy to address. So, as you may know, we wrote to all the major airlines that have A320 series aircraft servicing Logan Airport and asked them to install vortex generators. JetBlue sent us back a letter saying that they're going to look into it and get back to us. That was over 200 days ago. And given that a significant period of time has passed, and given that the FAA has directed the airlines to review the issue as of about a month ago, I drafted a letter for the Board of Selectmen to send on to JetBlue to request an update. So, I think I can turn those edits around pretty quickly. They're very minor, which was great. And then continue to put pressure on them. We need to continue to put pressure on the airlines that have A320s coming into Logan to quiet those planes down. It's an easy fix, and.
It still amazes me for $5,000 in a multi-billion dollar industry that they won't retrofit them.
Right, especially when you're paying, right, especially when you're paying 25, 50 bucks for bag fees.
They'll take some of the pressure off of them, but they choose not to for a small portion of money.
And part of it is that the, is that they've been lacking pressure. So, in Europe, the reason why they started retrofitting was pressure from, pressure from some of the airports, pressure from a number of the communities, pressure from the government. And until we apply that same level of pressure, and the FAA is trying to in its way, it doesn't really have currently purview over the noise that these planes make. But it did recently recommend that the airlines review this and act on it. But they lack the jurisdiction, or at least that's what they say, to force such a change. Because they're focusing on, is the airframe safe, not how much noise it creates. And we are also seeing an interesting dynamic where airlines like Delta specifically are buying newer airplanes but putting older engines on them.
I agree with that, I read, you talked about that the other day.
Yeah, and so, and so there's so much that could be done, but for the sake of profits over the communities that you're flying over, they're allowing these noisier planes to continue to operate, noisier and less fuel-efficient.
It's amazing, even some of the smaller ones, how noisy the whistle that they, it's really, it's really interesting.
So maybe for next meeting, we get the JetBlue letter ready to go and also have finalization on this. It sounds like we've got a consensus that we want to support this small investment in a good piece of equipment.
Comfortable with that?
Absolutely. Good. So we're waiting here back from town council and Nancy Timmerman and follow back up on that and the JetBlue letter.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you so much for coming in today. We appreciate it.
Need a van to drive it around or anything to you?
Have the noise van, that's right.
Okay, we have Bill Solomon, Attorney Bill Solomon, coming in now to give us a proposal to represent Milton in our Comcast negotiations. As many of you know, Peter Epstein, our longtime attorney, had chosen to retire. He was a fabulous representative of ours in the town of Milton, did a great job. The good news is, he comes, highly recommended, Bill does, from Peter Epstein and also our town council.
Thank you.
So, welcome, Bill.
Thank you very much. It's good to be here, thank you. I like the small table and the collegiality, but it's great.
It's going to be different from that next year.
Oh, you're going to five, is that?
Going to five.
That's right, wow. I'll enjoy it. Well, thank you for having me, and I do follow, Peter Epstein does tremendous work, really an icon and a pioneer in cable in Massachusetts. You know, we all continue to use the, so much of the work that he's done in the past, and he's done a good job for Milton. So let me talk a little bit about the process going forward, I'll try to be brief. You know, personally, I work hard for you to get an excellent renewal license with Comcast. As you know, cable is changing, potentially because of both the technology, video over the internet, the call over the top, the potential impact that has. Although Comcast has done a good job of keeping its basic subscribers, including here in Milton as of now, there's always potential of statutory and regulatory pressures. And so, I think what that does is focuses on the importance of this license, generally a 10-year license, I think it's in the interest of the town. To have a longer license, if something were to change, it's in place, and it becomes a very important license. What's great for Milton is it's building on the excellent work that was done by your team, including Barbara Martin, on the RCN license. So you're privileged to have another company, it's great to have two. RCN, of course, is smaller, is, you know, it's one-seventh the size, but it's there, it's available, it's an option for people, keeps the other side honest in a sense. And as we know, RCN, for instance, provides high-definition PEG access channels, so that you will, you'll have, and it's in your license, high-definition. Comcast doesn't do that yet, and that's one of the ways we can say that on Comcast. Well, RCN can do it, what do they know that you don't know? So, building on that excellent RCN license, which as you know, has PEG access support, operating support, 5% of gross revenue is the maximum allowed under federal law, has an excellent capital contribution, both in a per-year dollar amount and a percentage dollar amount. RCN also provides a institutional network, which returns the video, PEG access video from origination buildings to the one site, the studio, which gets picked up. And I believe you use that for your INET, for your municipal fiber.
Yes.
Which is invaluable. So, you know, we have that license to show, it uses a model to Comcast to say, well, we think this is a fair license. They always want to have a level playing field contract. Well, you know, we can point out that that's a good example to build on. So what, going forward, you know, what we'll do, working together, and you've done a lot of this work before, is figure out the needs and interests going forward for PEG access. You know, what are the operational needs, where's the program going, how will it improve and expand, what are the operational needs? Obviously, we'll aim for the 5%. We think that's a good, needed and a good example in the RCN license of where you believe you need to go. And we'll look at the capital needs for equipment and facility, including capital plans, enough to sit down then with Comcast at the table and try to reach a fair agreement. By doing that, I try not to do Level 2, which is like the litigation part. I don't think we need lots of letters of support or surveys or things like that. I think we only need that if we don't get somewhere at the table with Comcast. And I think, you know, I'm optimistic that we can here in Milton, and I look forward to working with the town on the renewal.
I know you've had a lot of experience working with other towns and, you know, success, especially in working with Comcast.
Yeah.
So, that's very welcoming to us. Can you just go just a little bit more about your background for the people at home?
Sure, yes. Well, I have a background in municipal law, I was town council in Stonem, which I retired from, because I have a younger family, I have the 30 years. I've worked with over 80 or so communities on cable licensing. I've done probably 120 cable licenses. When Verizon first came in, when you started with Verizon, but they pulled back, did about 12 out of the first 18 licenses, done, you know, 60, 70 or more licenses with Comcast. I've had some success in both getting good funding, doing some creative work on video return, sometimes it's called video return or INET buyouts. Here, we'll take a look, and I'll take a look and understand better how Comcast gets its video return back to its system, do they use the RCN system? Try to make sure that we can create value for the town. So, in my background, I think I've had good success in a very cost-effective way of working with a community, as your prior council did, and getting to an excellent result. I care how you do, and I care a lot about the license document itself, because of my municipal background. I focus a lot on the public policy issues that arise in a cable license, whether it's regarding public way, or whether it's a cable-related issue, such as the definition of gross revenue, that I work in a very detailed fashion to make sure that the license protects the town, not only in terms of what you think you're getting, but trying to make sure that it's a document that'll last for years to come. And I try to prevent companies from gaming that license to try to predict the future. We're doing a license now, we can all try to figure out the future, but, you know, what I think is in a license now, we need to make sure that we don't get too cute in trying to figure out where the world's going. Comcast is doing well as a company, the town has a good program. I don't anticipate that's going to change in the very near future. In the long term, there are pressures. And so, you know, I want this license to work for you, both now and also for the 10 years that are coming forward.
That's great. I think, you know, in reviewing, you know, your past and with the recommendation coming from Peter Epstein and John Flynn and the successes that you had, I think we're very fortunate to be able to have you in front of us tonight.
Thank you.
You know, and hopefully lead us moving forward.
I have a question for Bill.
Sure.
Did the RCN license renewal a few years ago? We had a town committee, and I guess that's what's been done in the past for both Comcast and RCN. Is that your experience in other towns, that there's been, you know, a little working group that kind of works with you to prepare the process?
Yeah.
And then handle the process going forward through the license renewal?
Good question. You know, every town is different. You know, in some towns, the committee works on subscriber issues as a liaison with the company, and you may have the administrator or a few folks doing the negotiation. In other towns, the committee's actively involved in the renewal. So, no, I leave that up to you, although I do think if you have a committee that's active, you're putting one together. I want to understand, as the town does, their thoughts going forward on the critical issues. The thing about cable is that, you know, there aren't that many issues, but they're complex, and not because of the nuclear physics, but because you have to sort of understand the going rate and understand the possibilities. And anywhere we can find out what people are thinking and have them support the continued progress of public and education, government access in Milton's helpful. So, working with the town, we can figure that out. At times, I think that's helpful, but I've done it all different ways.
Okay. I'm just asking, because when we did RCN a few years ago, we had a member of the board, the town administrator, and Barbara.
Oh, okay.
And working with Peter Epstein.
Yes.
But we didn't have the IT committee up and running at that point. We had one a number of years ago that was kind of disbanded, but it was renewed a few years ago. And so, we now have a five-member IT committee appointed by the moderator, and I think putting one or two of them on, if we do have a committee, it would probably be good to put one or two of them on. two of them on.
Well, I think, you know, yeah. Some, the IT committee, sometimes it depends what the focus is.
Right.
But here's what I believe, that I believe that having a team sitting down at the table is, as you've experienced, invaluable. I, it, it, the wonderful thing about cable is you have this act that incentivizes both sides. It incentivizes both sides to sit down and talk about it. And this is now a multi-billion dollar corporation. And if we ask Apple or Google or Facebook to say, hey, you know, bring someone down here, we'd like to meet with you once every month and go over different things, you know, we wouldn't get an answer. So that cable still remains, and to Comcast's credit, and certainly RCN with Tom Steele, you know, which is very, has a very good working relationship with communities, still remains something where you sit at the table and you talk about what's important and you find, and you get to a license because you hopefully work out that's what's really important to them. You can give them what's really important to you, but having a number of people there and expressing that, as you've experienced, is invaluable. So I much prefer having a negotiating team than, let's say, myself and one person. And to the extent you have an IT committee, I think that, that even though this is a little less IT-oriented than RCN, because you don't have the fiber network, I think that's, I think that's fine. And then they can decide together whether they're at every negotiation or whether at some negotiations. But I think the more they know that we care, the more they, they're, they're wanting to meet our, our needs. So I think that's a good process.
Wouldn't you think more so from the MPEG board versus the IT committee?
That could be another option, yeah.
I'm not sure of the, how many members of that?
We'd have to look back for Comcast. RCN was a smaller one. Comcast was 10 years ago, so it was all different people involved at that time.
That's just my, I'm just thinking.
What I understand, so it would be our, our own, our public, our own cable, what do they call it? MPEG board?
Yeah, MPEG, Milton Access TV.
Which Milton Access TV.
Right.
Board, which deals specifically with, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And you can work out any of the technicalities on that. And regardless of whether they're sitting there, which I think is fine, that we will work hand in hand with them to understand and have them put together with our assistance, their needs and their plans. And so, that's correct. Because sometimes on a technology committees, the orientation is, is very non-cable. But it depends, but I, I think that's, either way, we want to work hand in hand.
I agree with you. The team concept and having maybe a member from, from each would be helpful to you in helping direct what our constituents' needs are or internally what our needs are.
Yeah, yeah.
To get to the resolve that we want to be.
Yeah. Cable licensing now is becoming a little more challenging and together, I think that's the, we will try to meet those challenges. I'd be remiss if I didn't say also that, as a municipal attorney, I've known your Town Council, John Flynn, for more years than I guess I imagined, 30-plus years and you're well-represented and, and I don't know if you could find a nicer person, you'd have to look hard, but, but I appreciate his, his kind words.
We agree.
That's great. Thank you. We have a motion before us.
So I'll move that we retain Attorney William H. Solomon to represent the town of Milton in negotiations with Comcast for the renewal of its cable television license and that we authorize the town administrator to sign the fee agreement for legal services on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Okay. As a matter of discussion, I just want to thank you for coming in and we look forward to really working with you.
You're too, very much.
For a long time.
Well, thank you very much. I'm looking forward and we'll get started right away. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All of you. Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Nice to meet you, Bill.
Nice to meet you. Thanks. Okay, so, item 10 actually is on our agenda as a discussion related to Comcast service. So, the town administrator, myself, Jim Segroy, heads our IT, Rob Mallett, met on Tuesday morning with a government, government affairs official, Greg Franks, from Comcast and also Jay Ryan from their operational side. You know, we had a long discussion and also Michael Lynch, who was really the most important one, I think, in this discussion because of all that he's been faced with over the last five months. It's been a very trying time. He's, he's done yeoman's work. He's gone above and beyond, Michael has, in ensuring that the public has access, you know, to these meetings and, you know, he's been, he's been kind of really dancing a lot, you know, and trying to find. And in our discussion, Comcast, you know, they've, Jay has been excellent, if I might say, in trying to help diagnose the problem. It's an engineering problem.
Right.
So they've gone to a modem, we've had phone line problems. You know, we're looking to find solutions. You know, I explained to them that, you know, I've been unhappy with the amount of time that it's taken. It's been costly for us.
To fix it.
It has. And, you know, and I think that they have some suggestions moving forward. I think that Michael, as our administrator, could probably fill you in, but, you know, this is something that they've, they've told us they are, they have kind of expedited this to the top of the list because of the severity, you know, and the amount of time that they've had to spend so that we can fix this sooner than later. So, before we have them in, we're going to give them a little bit of time here to try to navigate, come back with some solutions that we'll be able to, you know, discuss with them, you know, in a public hearing.
Did he give you any sense, any other communities going through the same issues we are with them?
No, this is very unique to the town. And they have come up with some solutions to fixing it. Milton Access TV had a problem with their modem, which, so Jim Segroy and Rob Mallett handed them data that they had. They supplied Milton Access Cable TV with a new modem, which has solved that problem, but now that modem has created a phone line problem because it doesn't, it's not compatible with the Vonage line system. So, as David had said, Jay Ryan from, from the Comcast group, who's their operations guy, he's really working hard to solve this. Some of this stuff is out of his hands, as David said. It's an engineering problem and they wouldn't be ready to, to sit at the table and speak. I will say, after the meeting, everything that Jay said he would follow up with, he has followed up with. Jim Segroy and Rob Mallett received a, a series of PDF documents that, that will get them through the next phase of what they're looking to do. But at this time, it's, it's something they really can't put their hands on and it's, it's unique to Milton. It's, it's an issue that, you know, both our IT department and MATV says happened on the night of the election, something happened. As many of you who are at home during election night, it was, it was.
The conspiracy theories out there, I think.
But yeah, I'm quite confident that Jay Ryan will put, put the right people in place to try to resolve this. They can't solve this engineering problem. And one is a product called Metro E, which the school, Milton Public Schools, because of the amount of users that they have now and the amount of sessions that their modems see, allows them to, to not have this issue. But as Chair Burns mentioned at our last meeting, that does come with a premium. So, if this is something that we're going to work towards, if they can't resolve this, then this is something that we'd have to sit down with them and try to, try to mitigate because this, this, you know, there's, anyone at home who sees that modem and sees all the green lights working.
Right.
They saw it, but the modem wasn't connecting. It's, it's called the, the lights are on, but no one's home. And they saw it and witnessed it, but they couldn't really diagnose what the problem was. So they continue to work through it.
And this is similar to the issue we had in subsequent meetings here and then downstairs one night where they just couldn't make a connection at all.
Right. It would, it would, the modem would reboot itself at 6:45 and then cross their fingers and hope they got it up in the next 15 minutes.
This might happen tonight.
President's face walked in the room.
I was a little worried, yeah. I was a little worried, so.
Possibly they'll be ready for the next board meeting. They do have an engineering team on it and it has been put to the top of the list because it's a unique situation.
Yeah, we're waiting for these so-called solutions to come in and we'll all be privy to looking at those prior to having them come in and then to talk with them, okay?
Barbara Martin has been very diligent.
Yep.
She's been coordinating emails, both on our group, our side of the table and theirs and they have been responsive.
Yeah, absolutely. Barbara's done a fabulous job on this. So, so that's that. Any other discussion?
No.
Move forward, okay. Number 11 on our agenda is a discussion about October 2017 special town meeting articles. Okay. You know, obviously, one of the discussion items we're going to be having with the Warren Committee.
Mm-hmm.
With the Town Government Study Committee and the Personnel Board related to an article that the Town Government Study Committee and the Board of Selectmen are co-sponsoring. So, that'll be on September 11th in the evening.
Do we know if the Warren Committee's going to take up the other articles that night, marijuana and?
I haven't heard.
I looked at their agenda, it's just, it could be. It's general, it's very general.
I know.
And it's, in the way it's, in the way it's written.
I think if, if we could check the chair and see if, do we know what to expect? What about the signed by law article? Is there any word back from the Board of Appeals on that yet?
I haven't gotten any update. At our last meeting, Bill was to follow back up. He was going to talk to Chair Leonard.
Okay.
But I have not heard back yet.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll be able to move on that tomorrow.
Could you check on that tomorrow, maybe? Yeah, I'm mic-ing it on.
Any other discussion items?
No, the big one is for Monday night. That's what I think, and it's the only one.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good. Okay. Item number 12, we have Chief King. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief.
Here to talk.
Sup, Chief.
Of the Traffic Commission recommendations. Thank you for coming in.
Best part of the job.
Outgoing.
Yeah, I know. No kidding. Where's your success? You didn't even bring him with you.
Waiting for the Attorney General.
I call her, she's not going to do it. Are you kidding me?
These are really just a couple and they're relatively minor ones. The first one I mentioned on the first page, Bryant Ave. Essentially, it's to remove the current service zone designation for the parking spaces on Bryant Ave between Adam Street and Boulevard Street. So, the top paragraph you see there would remove the service zone and then if you look directly below it, it would designate it as two-hour parking. That originates out of the Planning Department. They said as part of the East Milton Deck, they were trying to maximize parking closer to the stores, the businesses essentially and there is available service zone spots further down Bryant Ave and people just aren't walking and they're sitting vacant. So this will kind of free some up for customers and visitors and it will push the employees a little further down Bryant Ave. So that's the intent of that first one. Just below that, two in a row again that kind of relate, Center Lane and Cyus Lane. There's currently do not enter signs Monday to Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., basically because they're cut through traffic. And a lot of it relates to Milton Academy. So, we were going to roll back, remove the 4:00 to 7:00 and change it 3:00 to 6:00 because it really is more school-related than, you know, employee rush hour. So, that one hour, we think will make a difference there.
That come from the residents there? Yeah.
It did come from a residential request, yeah.
Okay. I see a lot of people trying to jump that light at Reeddale.
Yeah.
And they're taking that left and cutting their way through.
Right. And the, the prior, they could do that up to 4 o'clock, so this will just give an hour and that might target the problem better. On the second page, if you skip down the first one on the discussion items, I just want to point out is the MBTA had done an accessibility improvement project and they studied several communities and they identified one spot in Milton and it's Adam Street by Laboree and the backside of Fontbonde Academy. And essentially, the buses going towards Boston, you know, have a little bit of a pull-in area and it's paved, but the bus is going towards East Milton where they're dropping people off. They're kind of pulling onto the grass there. It, you know, it's town property, but it's very uneven surface there. So basically, they want to put just a little bit of a square cement there so there's a level spot to drop people off so no one gets injured. And as part of that, a crosswalk they felt would enhance the safety of the passengers crossing between the two bus stops. That is one of the busier bus stops in town. So, we did support, you know, it's an MBTA recommendation. They did this in a few towns, but that was the one spot. We basically were recommending a crosswalk be installed and as part of that, they'll pave a little corner of existing land that's just currently mudding grass.
Would you have to give me a yes or no on that? Did you take a vote on that draft or just?
We, we did vote to support the, the crosswalk. Because it's a crosswalk, I would recommend the board vote on it. It just doesn't come on that front page because it's not covered under one of those specific articles.
You can put that in the form of a motion.
Yeah?
Yeah. Would you be comfortable with that?
Sure.
If we put it up first?
You know, there's several other things here. I'm more than happy to, as always, answer questions on, but essentially, those are the three main changes that we have. There were several other things discussed, but, you know, either discussed and deferred or no action was taken.
Could I ask you a question about one of the deferred items?
Sure.
Central Avenue, the trolley line.
Yeah.
References remove the unauthorized stop signs.
Yeah, this.
How are they up if they were not authorized? Is there any history on it?
Me and Mike talked about this. They appeared one day and I went down, looked at them and they weren't regulatory signs. They, they were stop signs up, but you could tell by the size, dimension, material, they weren't real stop signs. Me and Mike talked, we didn't know where it came from, did some research, talked to the contractors who were building the bike path. At first, we thought maybe they put them up just to get their trucks in and out to stop people so the trucks could reverse. It wasn't that. We checked with the MBTA, they said no, but we found the article in the Dorchester Reporter where an MBTA spokesman said they put them up to increase safety for the trolleys.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm relying on that third hand based on an article in the Dorchester Reporter. The MBTA said they didn't, but there is an MBTA spokesman in that reporter's article saying they put them up.
Same thing.
Because there had been like a fender bond between a trolley and a car.
Okay.
But, you know, it's, it's our roadway. It's, it's their tracks, but it's our roadway. So, we basically recommend that they be taken down. They're not authorized, they were never voted on. My opinion, they're not legally enforceable.
I only noticed it very recently and then saw it in your report.
Yeah.
I was wondering what the history was.
Coming, coming across the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a bit back and forth between the town administrator and me trying to investigate that. And the other things in that same paragraph, we're just housekeeping, there was a discussion about removing one parking spot in front of Central Cleaners that we decided not to do. Lee Toma, one of the new members, felt it might be a visibility issue, but we felt it was fine as is. In the, in the exchange for not removing that spot, we said we'd put enhanced signage, which we don't need a vote on, the DPW can put up the pedestrian crossing signs just to warn people now that the bike path is complete.
It's a busy pass, wasn't it yesterday? It's a busy bike path. What do you want to do about the sign? Do you want to just direct the DPW director to take them down?
Yeah, it's, it's a tricky one because I think there's people that still rely on it as they come across because it's been there, you know, especially as you come from Mattapan, when you come from River Street, it's on your left-hand side.
You want to send it back to the traffic commission to vote on it, to enact it legally? What do you think, is that something?
Well, we made a recommendation to remove them, but we don't feel they, they were never put up. I don't know that they need a vote to be removed. They shouldn't have been put up.
And you don't think that they're legally enforceable either?
I don't.
Yeah.
It's our roadway and this board never voted to put them in. You know, I would not have an officer stop somebody for it. I don't think it's a valid stop sign.
Right.
Yeah, just this discussion alone right now, someone ought to go and be cited on it, go to court on it, on appeal. The appeal be granted automatically, because it was not an enforceable sign.
I mean, I realize this is the MBTA, it wasn't, you know, some rogue person, but I don't think that gives it validity. I mean, we've had these crazy things where residents sometimes will put up a homemade sign, but I see this no different. I don't know that the board has to remove it. I think it's, the DPW can just go take that. That was the opinion of the Traffic Commission as a whole.
When you look at it, it appears like a real sign until you look up at it close, and it's been fabricated. It's not a professional sign. In Boston, they have that BTB logo on the bottom of it. It's not official. It needs to come down.
So why don't we just go ahead, and maybe you can even alert the MBTA.
Chase, all the T's.
Let them know as well, just that, you know, we're taking these down, just as a measure of courtesy. You know, it is our road, as the chief said, and more than likely not enforceable anyway, so.
And that trolley's been crossing that road for 60 years, or more than that, with little issue.
We've had very few incidents.
Little issue there that I can't-
Ever there. And the trolleys do stop.
The only time I can think of is a trolley got hit. It was stop, not the trolley didn't hit anyone. Trolley was stopping.
Trolley would stop, so it won't hit a car.
Someone hit it. But as far as a trolley hitting a car or pedestrian, I-
They have a lot of experience, I think, in that. You know, it's kind of a slow zone for them.
I'm with you there. I just leave this to Michael.
Yeah, we'll talk.
Let you handle it. You all right with that, Chief? You okay?
So I move that we approve the following recommendations from the Traffic Commission's June 2, 2017 meeting. Article 5, Section 6, Bryant Avenue, to remove the current service zone designation for the parking spaces on Bryant Avenue between Adams Street and Boulevard Street next to the East Milton Square Deck. Article 5, Section 7B, Bryant Avenue, to designate the parking spaces on Bryant Avenue between Adams Street and Boulevard Square next to the East Milton Square Deck as two-hour parking. Articles 8, Section 24, Center Lane, to change the current do not enter 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday sign on Center Lane at the intersection of Center Street to read do not enter 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And to change the current do not enter 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday sign on Sius Lane at the intersection of Center Street to read do not enter 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Chief, for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, item 13, boards and committees appointment. 350th Committee, you did great work.
I actually met with the two co-chairs this morning. Go ahead. I thought I saw Kathy Fagan come in, but I don't know where she went.
I saw her this morning as well.
I saw her in the hallway.
I had a meeting here, and I saw her, and she said that she was meeting with you on some sign.
Yeah, the legacy gift of the, because I actually, when I saw this, I'm like, the 350th, I forgot that they still had work that they had not done, so.
Yeah, so for the viewers who are watching, it's, they have the legacy clock.
Yes.
For East Milton, and there's probably a little bit of other money that they need to-
They're continually working.
... dispense of at some point.
Yeah, they have the 10, they have 10 legacy signs of significant, they work on this a little, before Anne Marie left, I met with Mary McGlaughlin today and Kathy Fagan, two of the co-chairs. Lindley, I won't forget you, but you were at school today. And part of that legacy gift is the clock, which Chase called me about last week.
Yeah.
Which is, and I, my feeling is, I think we wait, as nice as it came out in the Village, I think we wait until the square, the deck is done, and put it there.
Yes, well, that's been the plan for a while.
Yeah, and I told Chase that. I think that's definitely the, and on this here, they're ready to move, to write an RFP, they have about $25,000 to spend on 10 signs. And they'll send that to you, and-
Pretty good.
They're very nice, they'll send you, they're gonna pick a prototype, I think they have three companies, or two or three companies. They showed me a couple. They had about 20 places that you could, of significant, I mean, we're in Old Town, there's a lot of, look how many houses have them. So they'll recommend to you 10 locations, and they'll come to you with that show me. So they're anxious to get this moving, and I'm anxious to see them get it done, so.
Good. I know they've been working with Barbara Martin and Kevin Cook, about veteran-
Yeah, they brought that up as well. Especially maybe putting some of their money towards the chair to remember.
Yeah, that would be great.
It's great, okay.
You want to read it?
I'll do that, yeah. So, proposed motion to appoint Gina Trafoni of 40 Pillen Road, Hyacinth Critchell of 70 Meadowview Road, actually, this is the reappoint, right? Because these are the-
Yes.
Kathryn Fagan of 78 Capen Street, Kevin Donnie of 17 Meeting House Lane, Wallace Sisson of 278 Adams Street, Brian Doherty of 515 Canton Avenue, Elizabeth Neville of 5 Cliff Road, Lindley Sharon of 57 Clifton Road, Mary McGlaughlin 3 Eric Drive, and Emma Jean Moulton of 435 Elliot Street, back to the Milton 350 Committee to serve through September of 2018.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna defer item 14 on our agenda, move to item 15, boards and committee appointment in safety and training committee.
I'll move that we appoint Thomas McCarthy of 629 Randolph Avenue, John Calabro of 629 Randolph Avenue, Dean Alexander, also 629 Randolph Avenue, and Robert D. Petro, also of 629 Randolph Avenue, which is the DPW yard, to the in-service safety and training committee to serve through September 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item 16 is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for having me tonight. Very busy week in town, obviously. Lot of updates from what we talked about at our last meeting. Obviously, school went back. I think the construction projects, they did a very good job of getting kids to and from school safely. I do ask, and it's been an observation made by Lieutenant Alba, Chief King, myself, and many people that have matriculated, the pedestrian patterns have changed. We ask that people take the time and comply with the new crosswalks. The last thing we want to do in constructing a project to get our kids to and from school more safely is to see when someone not using those new crosswalks and traffic signals. So it's a work in progress, but I think everything went well. Still need the use of cones in certain places. People have some habits, probably the parents with 4th and 5th graders that have been doing it for four or five years, but I think it should work itself out in the next couple of weeks as we head into, you know, October.
It's a huge change.
Yeah.
I've walked it every day this week. I, like you, I was like, last week, I'm like, will they get this done? I mean, they have almost all the signage done, all the new school, the new school's own signs are up, the 21st century versus the old, two flashing, just yellow light bulbs, the bike lanes are in. To Lieutenant Alba's credit, he's wanted to change this, because those two schools, the crosswalk and crossing system really wasn't designed for how those schools do function today. And this is a vast improvement. It'll take a little bit of education, but it's definitely workable, and it appears to be much safer, and really laid out very well, both for the commuter traffic, the vehicular traffic, as well as the pedestrian traffic and the school children, so. Kudos to you and everyone who worked on that. It looks very good.
Yeah, they worked very hard on it. And the bike lanes have been installed, and there's some bucket list things left to do on those projects.
I saw it going there today. He was there today.
They're starting to put some of the grass loom down. Hopefully, we can get that stuff grown and settled, and I think everybody will like it even more when that stuff grows back in. So kudos to all those people. Along the lines of safety, we installed our first two-speed radar monitors last week, Public Works, at the bequest of the Milton Police Department. We're waiting for three more of those. The first two, one was installed on Pleasant Street between Edge Hill and Gordon Road. We heard a couple of gentlemen who were here about a month ago, talking about the dire straits there. I was on-site when they installed it, and Mr. Dunn approached us, as well as one of the residents, Ms. Peterson, from Pleasant Street, and they were pleasantly surprised and quite happy. It's not gonna solve all their problems, but it works. It flashes a white light if you're speeding, and flashes your speed. They subsequently put one on Brook Road, just outside Windsor Road, as you head towards St. Mary's. See the speed accumulating there a lot faster. I watched it this morning for about four or five minutes, and there's a lot of white lights. Pleasant Street, I didn't see too many white lights, but as we get the next three in, Chief and Lieutenant Alba and the other folks in town will start moving them around, and they have a list of places to put them. But if anybody watching tonight has an area of concern, they can certainly reach out to Lieutenant Alba or the chief and get on the list. Had a great meeting today with the Norfolk County Commissioners. Just want to continue and maximize that relationship with them. Commissioner Collins-
Secret Jew.
Little vignette from Commissioner Shea today. Commissioner Collins and his dad have been sitting, with the exception of two years, as a county commissioner since 1964. So Milton is very relevant in their world, in the 27 communities. They're talking about a regional approach. Obviously, they're gonna help us with some traffic counting markers down in East Milton Square that'll be put down next Wednesday, and they're gonna pay for those, and we appreciate that. But just all the work that the county does, from public safety to, you know, the registered deeds, everything that the county does for us, and it was a warm welcome they gave me, and we just, we need to acknowledge the work that they do for us. Young kid named Michael Mullin has taken over, and he reached out to me, and sat in here one day, and talked about what they could do for the town, and he's already followed through on it. So I want to keep that line of communication open, and they're gonna, looking to become an incubator for the surrounding towns. Obviously, we wouldn't necessarily have many things in common with Franklin, but the Waymouths, the Branch trees, the Quincy's, and sit down and do some best practices, and maybe some consortium, consortium buying on products. Great news, I think there'll be a statue of Jack Calabro going up in town pretty soon. About half the lights have been delivered for the LEDs. Had a very good discussion, we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is with the installer. Hope to have that notice to proceed tomorrow or Friday, and they're gonna get out on the street starting Monday. We're gonna put together a plan, sat down with Chief King yesterday about making sure that we have proper detail work on the main drags. I think they're gonna start on the side streets, there's plenty of work to do on the side streets, until they catch their breath. They are working in Quincy as well, so it works well that they're in the community. Hopefully, we'll have the entire town retrofitted in about six weeks.
Do they change the whole arm, or is it just an LED insert, like changing a bulb?
Some of them, they change the arm, some of them, they just change, they change the head, yeah. Some of them involve a little more work, but this company's very reputable. Again, we're just crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on that, and hopefully, notice to proceed and start that work Monday. Tree planting, 'tis the season. Tom McCarthy is heading up to Amherst Nursery tomorrow to pick out 100 inch-and-a-half caliper trees. They'll all come with burlap bags and gator bags, which will preserve the growth of those trees in the first year. So very excited to get that work underway. That's just the first in a series of, it's about 100 trees he's going up to get. It's the first in a series of stuff we're gonna do between the middle of September and first or second week in December, which is the optimal planting season.
Did you say in a previous report that someone's, that we lose about 1,000 trees a year?
We lose about 100 a year.
100 a year, okay.
Yeah, so there's some catching up to do. This year, with touch wood, we'll be able to plant a lot more than the 100 we lose, and keep that funding mechanism each year to make sure that we're playing catch-up. So great work done by Shea Tree Advisory Committee, and hopefully, the RFP goes out shortly, and the timing of the trees getting here and the contract being awarded should coincide. Just a couple upcoming events. Mary Ann Sullivan reached out to me today just to make sure. I know it's early September, but October will be upon us. The Free Shred Day for Milton residents, again, sponsored by District Attorney Michael Morrissey, will take place Tuesday, October 3, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for Milton residents in the parking lot of the Senior Center on Walnut Street, so.
He's coming to do it himself? He should.
Yeah. I wouldn't be surprised.
I wouldn't, I'm not, it won't be at all.
The annual household hazardous waste drop-off will take place Saturday, the 16th, at the DPW yard on Randolph Ave. And believe it or not, we have a department head meeting on Monday to start putting our FY19 budget together, so. 'Tis the season.
You knew that, didn't you?
I was actually gonna bring that up on the future agenda. I'm so glad Mike brought that up.
So that's where we are in a short picture. I think I touched upon everything, but, yeah, we'll be meeting with the new Warren Committee here, talk to George Asher on Friday, so that should be a very dynamic conversation, and as we get to know each other and work through the upcoming season with the Warren Committee, so very excited about that.
Thanks for a great report, Michael. I have one item of great importance that I want to share. I want to thank Emily Martin here from our staff for really taking an incredible leadership role on Milton's help for Houston. You know, she was the one who thought it up and decided to pull it all together, and wouldn't you know, we have such great town employees from the Department of Public Works, the Milton Auxiliary Fire Department, who have all stepped up. We have volunteers-
Talking Emily.
Volunteers, residents. I stopped over there before this meeting, a resident from Maryland Road. You know, we have people who just, it's great humanity, people who step up in times of need. Michael McNosa from the Fruit Center, who's dropped off pallets and pallets of non-perishables, and it's just, it's so, we're so grateful to have a community that we live in, that where people just step up in times of need for others. You know, I also want to recognize, he won't hear this, but I think it's good for the town to hear, that Deputy Chief Holmes from the Stoughton Police Department has provided us an opportunity for us to transport all of this, you know, basically to piggyback on their 18-wheeler. And that just shows you, you know, as Richard said, you know, regionalization and having good partnerships. These bridges were built long ago, and it's a credit to all the people that work in the town every day, and different departments, and the relationships that they have. Just goes to show you that, you know, we're doing good things, and it's employees like Emily, and the DPW, and the Milton Auxiliary Fire Department that have really stepped up to make things so great. So, you know, we still have another night tomorrow night, you know, from 4:00 to 7:00. Bring your stuff. I think that it's a great opportunity to come down and help this cause, and from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., right at the Chemical Building. For those of you who don't know the Chemical Building, it is the building right next to Fire Headquarters behind Town Hall, and you'll see plenty of people out there willing to help. So we look forward to seeing some people tomorrow night. So thanks again, Emily. We appreciate it.
Round of applause for Emily.
That's what I have for tonight, so members' reports.
I don't have a report, just terrific leadership by Emily and terrific initiatives, so thank you, Emily.
I have you written with five underlines, so, and I do want to give out a shout to, I don't know how well you knew them, but I, the members at the auxiliary unit have been near and dear to me for a long time, Captain Fleming and his, and you can see just in the two days you've been there, they took you right out of their way, and they go out of their way to try and help you. The staff in this building, I've seen almost every office, the clerk's office, I mean, everyone has come over there to try and help, but it dropped something off. So, you know, you wonder when you go, and I thought to myself, last night, like, who's gonna come? But then when I came back tonight, and I could see it all doubled and tripled from last night, so that says a lot to the humanity that lives in this community at times, so that's a good thing. And to Stoughton PD thanking them for, I'm sure it'll be a big DPW truck full of stuff, so maybe you can, is it on the website, that the list of water, I note, there isn't a lot of water, but the things like, there's been a lot of diapers, a lot of, but non-perishable canned goods, things like that, those are things that there haven't been a lot of, but there's a lot of, a lot of people have really stepped up to try and do this.
Sidebar, any further needs to be noted.
Oh, yeah. There was actually someone, a whole truckload of shoes last night. I'm like, but it's, and who knows what happened? I mean, it could be Florida, who knows what's gonna happen in this country in the next 24 hours that hasn't even been impacted yet, so. Is, I think Governor Baker said today, a big shout-out to him as well, that I wanted to give. You know, my nephew goes to Mass Maritime, and it's a school that I love dearly, especially my work with the Pan-Mass. They sent the training ship, if you saw the news today, they sent, the Massachusetts Training Ship is being sent to Texas to work as a foot, because you think about, they have all the amenities, they have all the infrastructure. They do it in wartime, you know, remember the hospital ships of World War II? So they're sending the Kennedy down to be a floating operational logistics center, house people, they can live in it, for the people working on Harvey. And both he and Lieutenant Kevin Appolito went to Mass Maritime today to get a big center off.
That's great.
It's a lot about partnership, and I give credit to Chief Grant, too.
It's a lot about partnership and I give credit to Chief Grant, who we text the other night, you know, his guys were more than willing to go off. And having gone through a lot of these myself, you know, it's a big thing to leave your family and go somewhere else where someone's really in need. And so for everyone who has dropped off, I think it says a lot and thank you again, Emily, for doing that.
Just to piggyback on that, I can't thank Emily enough. When I left to my quick trip to Ireland on Wednesday night, I was working with the chief about sending possibly two people down there and had full blessing and full support and I come back and Emily's, they obviously didn't go down as chief explained to us tonight and I come back and Emily had literally put this, put this together from start to finish and including, you know, working on how we're going to wrap it up tomorrow night and get it out to Stoughton so that that truck can leave as early Friday morning as possible. So I echo your comments. It's an unbelievable initiative by Emily and thoroughly, thoroughly followed through by her and all the members of the community and the team that have been waiting diligently for supplies.
And she did a lot of this work on the weekend, too, on her own time, so.
And last night, she went to work on Red Shoe as well after, after that one. I noticed that.
Yeah, I think it's important for the residents at home to understand that we have so many employees that go above and beyond and this is a fine example of one of them that really made a difference. And it makes a difference for all of us, so thank you. Future agenda items, actually, we didn't have anyone for citizens to speak today, so no response. Future agenda items?
I had three. Budget, I think we need to have a, you know, just to start off the new season, we should probably have the budget on one of the next agenda items. Health insurance for the Board of Selectmen, and I want to bring that back up. The last, we talked about it, Paige Appolito, the Assistant Town Administrator, was going to do some follow-up research, so I'm not sure if she's finished with that yet, but hopefully this fall, we can get that back on an agenda.
Okay.
And as we start heading in towards fall and winter, hard to believe, we need to start thinking about the planning for the five-member board, logistically, meeting space, all of that, as well as.
Absolutely.
Other planning for that. So I think probably mid to late fall, we should at least have at least one agenda item where we have a discussion about that.
Completely agree. And we'll have Comcast, as I said, as another agenda, we'll be waiting for that information. We'll be getting another update sometime soon on Pilot.